How was everyone tonight? Do we have any public participation this evening?
I just wanted to find out if there's any more on the website. Have you guys done anything more with it?
The principal's report tonight.
Okay, I just want to let you know I was volunteering time to help if you had to get it up in my mind. I put a lot in my place, but I'm only going to help out.
So noted, thank you. Any other public participation tonight? Darren Knut, instead of the approval of the November 1st, 2018 school committee minutes, as written, all with corrections as recommended by the superintendent of schools. What was that?
On new business number two, it has a grade three, zero, one, that would be one of staying out against that.
No, that's what should be, should be three, one.
Three, one.
Okay, correct there. Any other discussion on that? We have a motion for something that says corrected. Any discussion? All in favor? For, against?
Active.
Stay in, okay, thank you. Principal's report, please.
Your parent teacher conferences the other evening, we had a ninety-seven point five percent attendance on the sixteenth, our STAR testing program, which we do three times a year for all students and then depending on where they score every six weeks will be upgraded. That is an upgrade at no cost. On November sixteenth, which is tomorrow, for teachers, their first SLO, which is their student learning objective, is due, that is part of their evaluation. They are required to do two of those. The twenty-first is an early release for Thanksgiving. It seems impossible that the thirtieth is the end of our first trimester, which is school year that we've third over already. On the fourth and the fifth, Mrs. Street and I will be attending a growth mindset training. It is put on by the Department of Education, which there was no cost for that, and that was to train the trainer. The fifth is an early release day, which will be working on Fred Jones positive classroom discipline. This came about based on a survey that was provided to staff. The first time around, they chose the five best practices that they thought were important for teaching.
Who's Fred Jones?
It's a program. It's something that Mrs. Murphy and I have trained into training. Then the second time the survey was administered, they narrowed it down to three and then they narrowed it down to one, and this is what they chose. On the seventh, the seventh, our report cards go out for our first trimester. The tenth, we have the STAR testing for kids who have scored in red and yellow. The thirteenth is the Christmas play at sixteen AM.
Red and yellow, what does that signify?
So when you take your STAR testing, you get put into four categories. Needs a lot of help, needs some help on watch and where they need to be. So the red and the yellow are the kids that we test more frequently as we put them through the response to intervention piece. This is the program that we do from seven fifteen until quarter to eight in the morning, where they participate either in a computer program or IXL, I don't know what those three initials stand for, or a small group, or direct instruction from teachers based on reading and math.
Okay, you do that from what time?
Seven fif- the RTI time is seven fifteen to quarter to eight.
What time is the official school time set?
Seven thirty.
So how are you doing this before official?
All of our bus- all of our bus students are there at seven oh five, so they get to take advantage of the whole time. If we change that time, then we're going to cut into the hour and a half block that we have for math in the LA.
What about the students that don't take a bus?
Most of them are there. This is a practice that we've been doing for seven or eight years now. Christmas play is the thirteenth at six o'clock. Craft day is the fourteenth, that happens during the school day. The snow date for craft day is the nineteenth, and the snow date for Christmas play is the twentieth. And the twenty-first is the early release and the adult those students Christmas party. In regards to the website, two or three sets of the hype have gone over. I still need to go over it, and then hopefully before Thanksgiving, it will be made public. Hopefully, depending, if any, like if we're not in tomorrow, then that knocks the day off to look at it, that type of stuff. Also, the school nurse, I did participate in those, that interview, and Barbara Matthews will be our school nurse, waiting for her to be fingerprinted.
Question on the website?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a possibility that the board might have a preview? Is there a link into that?
Sure.
Is there a link sent to the board members?
Yeah. Sure can, let me get that on the mic to do this. So Barbara has been at the school, looking at the facilities, inventorying what's there, setting up that type of stuff, and again, just waiting for her fingerprinting. She has had it done, she needs to process it.
And she's going to be there, how?
By the way.
Is she going to need any medical supplies or else being provided?
That is what she's been down checking out to see what she has, unassuming, because the medical center who wrote the grant, that's where things will come from. I'm not certain on that, but... And that is my report. Open financial report, please. That's open financial report.
Go ahead.
Previously last year, we had discussed on a stipend for someone that's going to be the point person in charge of maintaining the website, of keeping everything updated. Have we, have we had the names of the people who would want that to be the point person? Because I believe that was in the budget. There was a stipend for the person that's going to be in charge of maintaining it, keeping it current week to week of the day.
It is indeed in the budget, and at the last meeting, I distributed some sample job descriptions for that position.
For the website?
For the IT position.
But that was, so that was two different things. That was the IT coordinator, the IT coordinator doesn't exist anymore. That was done away with, there was just a stipend for somebody in-house. And also, there was a stipend for the person that's going to maintain the website. Is it going to be one and the same person? Because I thought there were three names quoted.
At this, at this point, I believe it still could be one person. It depends on the preference of this board. We have had individuals working on the website, and we do have one employee that's been submitting requests for compensation via time guide.
What about the other employees, are they going to be compensated?
I mean, they will be if, if they are performing those services. I just need some type of documentation, a time card, a time sheet, something.
But there's, it's a stipend position, correct?
That's correct, yes, and instruction now, it's.
Yeah, but it is not an hourly wage. It was a, I thought it was, there was going to be a $2,000 stipend for the person that was going to be in-house IT, and then there was a $1,000 stipend for the person that was going to be keeping up the website. And I remember there was like two or three names quoted. I thought one person was going to be doing the in-house running room, doing any, you know, the last minute fire stuff was going on, and then they call out if they can't handle it.
Refresh my memory, did we nominate, did I nominate somebody for that at the September meeting? I think so. Nominate for what? Did we nominate Kathy Moss for the in-house person?
Yes, I believe for the, for the IT or in-house person.
Support, I guess you'd say, right, and the other, and the other component of that has not yet been filled.
Okay, will that be brought up to us?
I think we have, we do have some information on an IT job description, and I think we'd agree to basically look at it until December sixth.
Yeah, I'm just talking about, there, there is two positions, and one was the web coordinator. I don't know that we really need a full job description, you know, maintain, keep everything up to date, but, but don't, doesn't the other person have to be appointed? Or is one person going to do both jobs?
I believe the other person, the in-house support, was appointed at the, at the September meeting.
But what about the website person?
That person. The other position, and you're correct, originally, in our plan, it was two separate people. We will be appointed the in-house support, the other one has not been pending some type of job description.
So we need two job descriptions, one's for the in-house and one's for the website person.
The in-house is doing the website.
Oh, so one person's going to be doing both seconds? Because I thought you said there were several people working on it.
I'm not at the school today, so I don't, don't look at me for this.
I mean, it's not going to be fair if one person is getting all the pay and other people are helping through it too.
This is something, I guess we're going to have to discuss it in another meeting.
Okay.
I mean, the job description, yeah, somewhere.
I don't think it needs to be very complicated.
No.
Very simple, it's not a rope, it's a stipend.
Okay. Anyone else on the school board have anything before I jump into this, right? Sometime in December, and it's yet to be announced, I'm going to have a gentleman here from ABM Mechanical, again, to look at the building inside, to look at other ideas on how to, I don't want to say transform, but, but yeah, to transform our heating system that we have from a boiler system to maybe something else, something a little more economical, and might not be as costly as replacing a boiler, so. I'll be sending out a note, and I just want the board's approval that I can rent the building with this gentleman, and actually, or a functionist, or wingman, or am with the school board, or represent the school board, sometime in December. I want to say it's probably going to be the first week in December, so I encourage that, so.
And then you'll come back with options?
Yeah, we're going to come back and, you know, he's, he's going to look at the structure of the buildings, all like that, because there's some other ideas he's come up with as far as, you know, instead of replacing a great big heavy iron boiler, maybe doing something else, like what they call roof air handlers and something like that. These would be possibly hybrid units that would be, you know, be able to go into the building probably at a significantly less cost than three hundred something thousand dollars.
So my question is, you'll meet, will you meet with him and then bring options back?
Absolutely, that's what I said. We're going to look at things, you're going to look at the structure of the building and see if even the stuff we're talking about is capable of being put into the building, so. He's going to bring one of his engineers with him, so. Questions?
I went to a week-long grant writing certification class recently, and one of the things that came out is there is a lot of options, there's a lot of grants out there, for heat pumps and solar panels, the schools that want to convert, or there's, you know, forgivable financing, there's, there's a lot of options out there. Is there somebody with the AOS that can explore that idea? Because I know there was two people in my class that had worked in schools that had received those grants and that special financing, and they have almost a zero energy bill. It's a wonderful program, if our school could, you know, get involved in something like that, or if, if we're going to invest $300,000, could we look into that as an option as a class, because the energy costs are on this mill, and we have plenty of solar. Is that an option? Because I, that could be a standard savings every year, that's, I believe our budget's like seventy thousand a year for fuel.
I'll ask ABM Mechanical, I don't know if they get into solar and something like that, but he, pretty worldly, all works around, and so.
I know there's state programs and there's state grants that we could at least try for. It's an option. Is there anyone in the AOS that does grant writing? And have other schools ever applied for anything like that?
There is not somebody at the A and the A, that's organized under the AOS umbrella who does grant writing on behalf of either the district or the individual towns. Second part of your question, the answer is yes, there have been some other towns that have taken advantage of different grant opportunities. One that comes to mind immediately, I don't know if I'd call it a grant, but there were, there are rebates available through Energy Efficiency of Maine, North Eastport, and Perry have taken advantage of that. Eastport more specifically has replaced interior gym lighting at the, in the elementary school gym, as well as the high school gym, all energy efficient savings. They were rebated a significant portion of the installation cost. Perry just replaced the outdoor lights in the parking lot with LED's and received approximately $900 in rebates.
Did I talk to you about that? But it's a good segue though, thank you.
Is that, is it possible that we can maybe get their information, if they were able to?
The, the other thing is, while I was downstate a few weeks ago, and Ken was down at that meeting, Stephanie was also at the meeting, I had talked to several companies regarding LED lights, and again, it was a good segue, we haven't even talked about it, but thank you. I would actually like to have two of these companies come in to evaluate the school's lighting. Now, these are LED lights in here, these were transformed a few years ago, and significant cost savings and something like that. There are programs where there is financing to give this and something like that, where I'd go rebates, and it's rebates on the state and federal level for those items. So I'd like to invite these guys, probably sometime after the first year, and look around the school, look around the building, and so on like that, to evaluate, you know, what would cost to do this, and to get this changed and something like that. He didn't give me any figures on, on what we'd say, but what's our electric bill for the year?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Thirty-nine thousand dollars, I believe, so, except in the thirties, so some thirties, so. And lighting, I would say, is probably about, probably sixty percent of it. So the fluorescent lights, I think the lights in the gym are 277 volts, so those are a little bit heavier abuse and something like that, so. I'd like to invite these guys and get your information, and what I'll do is I'll ask them, I'll ask them to give me information, something like that, and get it to the school board, get it to the superintendent, and see if we can get these people up there sometime after the first year, look, and see what goes on with that, so. Did we have a plumbing incident in the last week or so at the school, or kind of water flow, water flowing out the back of the boiler room or something? Not going to, not going, I'm aware of. Water flowing out the back of? I don't know, it might have been just that, the sump pump working overtime, I don't know, because I know we had a lot of rain, so.
I know we filled the other tanks.
It might have been a sump pump working overtime that I went by there, but all this water and stuff pouring out, so. That's all I have for right now.
Mine, could I, I'm sorry to get asked during public, but when are you guys going to do the budget? Have you guys talked about that yet?
We plan to start looking at the budget sometime, probably in the beginning, where? Okay, superintendent report.
A couple items in my report here this evening. At the last meeting, I indicated that I was waiting for the official notification letters regarding our status on the BW grant. I had received those letters, and we were denied, so we did not receive an award from the BW grant. Eastport was denied as well. So that was, that was disappointing, but on a glass as half-full note, we did receive confirmation of approval of funding through the state. Our application for a new bus purchase was approved through the state, and I made contact with the person responsible for that, went in and indicated that, yes, we would be purchasing a school bus, so we have approval for up to $90,000 that would be subsidized replacement by the state. We won't get the full ninety, but we will get something by going through that.
Was it one bus or two buses?
That was for one bus. If we, if we're in, I see later in the agenda, there's a discussion of costably purchasing the second bus, and there is money on the line where we could make two payments. One would be subsidized to the state, but they only, they only approved that one automatically because we did not have a spare. This is what, is what was key to that application. So anyway, we did not, we did not receive an award through the BW grant, however, we do have approval through the state for a purchase of up to $90,000.
What portion comes back?
Yeah. I would estimate thirty to forty percent. Years ago, as recently as eight or ten years ago, the state reimbursed those at a much higher rate, and they just simply aren't reimbursing them at that rate anymore. But any subsidy is better than no subsidy, so we would be, we would be getting at that back. Conceivably going that route, you'd be looking at a five-year lease purchase with a bus payment in your budget, a whole long sum, but it can, it can certainly still happen, and the need is certainly still there. Speaking of the need, followed up with Keith Hollowell this morning, who had been in contact with Randy here locally, and indeed, we do have one bus that's still down, and Randy replaced an emission sensor, and that didn't do a trick, and essentially, the bus is still overheating. The cooling system is somewhat clogged, and the bus essentially trips a sensor, which puts it into limp mode, and it just crawls along the road at fifteen, twenty miles an hour. Stopped in on my way this morning, and Keith ordered the park, and I'm hoping that with the pending break at Thanksgiving, that if the park shows up Monday or Tuesday, we won't be down any great length of time in terms of student days.
We still have Whiting's spare bus right now?
We do. The last thing in my report this evening, as requested by the board, Mike and I did meet with Superintendent Scott Porter and Headmaster Judge McBride about transportation. Both WA and Machias receive our secondary students. Both indicated their willingness to look in the, into the matter and potentially help us, but both also stated that they have challenges themselves in terms of finding a driver. We mentioned just a minute ago that we're currently using a bus on loan to us from a Whiting school department that is under Superintendent Porter's jurisdiction, but Headmaster McBride also indicated his willingness to cooperate as much as he could.
Is there anything you'd like to add to that, Mike? No, it's just one of these things that, I mean, yesterday, I saw the bus went into town, I believe it was probably about four fifteen in the afternoon, we were just coming back from Machias, dark. And my main concern, you know, in meeting with these gentlemen, was that, you know, the morning's dark, and then we've got snow coming, we've got bad weather coming, so in a case of early dismissals and something like that, we'd rather begin to give them scoot back to town, so. I think in one sense that, you know, they did say that they would try to work out things logistically. Again, it comes down to, you know, get the kids from the Machias school to WA, and then from there to Whiting Corner, so. I, I believe one of the, one of the challenges that comes up, and, you know, it's, it's been said before, that, you know, towns especially do not want to put extra kids on a bus, especially high school students that are responsible for us, so. But I believe they were both going to talk to a few of the school districts and actually see where they go, so. Am I hopeful? No, but it's one of these things that, you know, you've got to ask.
Right, right.
Question?
Someone speaking out of order, but my concern is like, the buses go by our house every day, again, it's like a quarter full each bus, is there a need for such a big bus? We have a struggle getting the bus funded. Are the small buses cheaper, like the little ones?
We'll talk about that in a minute.
Okay. Because I'm not, you know, they go by our house every day, and we're counting maybe ten kids on there, and I know some kids are at the school program, does that look out? And how many kids are in the school? You said your numbers are drawn.
We'll get into that, and we'll.
Okay, I just, I'm trying to buy in two big buses that we don't need, that's all.
So we're kind of in limbo mode, waiting, and hopefully, you know, maybe after the holiday break, we might be something, something like that, maybe, you know, if, I, I think it comes down to the individual towns wanting to put high school kids on their bus.
Yeah.
And then having the responsibility. It's not, it's not a question of liability, it's a question of responsibility and having, you know, who knows, maybe, you know, boys just kids on the bus, so. We're working on it, so. Adjustments to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Old business, go ahead.
I've gone back to the bus conversation. In different times, when we've had a little crisis, crises, there's been another person a volunteer that's on the bus with the bus driver, so a bus driver doesn't have to drive a full-size bus and be responsible for behavior of all the kids on the bus also. Is that something we can look into, having a parent, or?
We can go right ahead and look into it, but again, you can't find a school bus driver, I don't know if we're going to find someone to go on the bus, especially as a volunteer. I understand it's a good idea.
I've got, I've got other towns in the district that have a bus monitor, and I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of one in particular that is, that is compensated like a, like a duty. This particular person is paid a very nominal stipend, and they agree to ride the bus in the afternoon.
So a current employee?
Right, in that particular school system, it is. If we wanted to throw that out to our staff as a potential option, that's a simple in-house posting, is anybody interested, then we, there'd have to be some type of negotiation to arrive at a stipend, but if that's something the board is interested in, then let me know, and I'll have Tina start with an in-house posting.
The only rub with that is that we still have buses in town.
That's true.
At three o'clock in the afternoon, they're trying to get out of town, and our idea is, you know, we're going to start at WA, and come this way, to be at the Whiting Corner at like two forty-five or three o'clock, so they'd have to get from here to there, so.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Okay, any old business. Okay, new business, to consider disposal of elementary textbooks.
What are these textbooks, and how many are there?
So I don't know how many, but I did find some as old as nineteen eighty-four, and the ones, the most recent would be the ones that just replaced our reading program, so that's two thousand and seven, somewhere between those years. And I'm finding them in back shelves on this closet, and down on the floor under this shelf, and, so I don't know how many. But at least eleven years old, it's not old enough.
A thousand pounds of books?
Some are hard cover, some are soft cover.
Okay. Thousand pounds, five hundred pounds, or just, just a guesstimate?
I'll guess, ah, it's a thousand.
Okay.
I really don't know.
Is there a possibility, if we can, I don't know, get the covers torn off of them? If we get the covers torn off, we can then take them down and dispose of the covers and take the paper down to the recycling place.
I'm thinking to take the covers off is going to need a, some sort of a sharp object.
Okay.
Mike, didn't Barbara Salida offer to do that last week?
Well, I'm not going to volunteer for anyone who's not here right now.
Right.
She, she did that for the books that were down, the LCOC that have, they've been shucked of their covers, and they're going to be disposed of. I guess the paper pods were disposed of down there, and we now have the hard covers or whatever.
So like the paperback would not need any things taken off, but there are, like the nineteen eighty-four?
The cardboard cover type thing that they won't take down there, so I guess they can't shred that, so.
So, question, could I separate hard cover and soft cover and recycle the soft cover?
Yeah, I would say that could probably be the best thing to do, and then, you know, put them all together somewhere. I see you. Put them all together somewhere, and then when we're ready to dispose of them, we'll let us know how many we have there, and we'll look appropriate means to do that.
Just going to, the covers, all the covers have to come off, including the soft covers, so. They, it has to be just the inside papers, can't be like a card stock.
Can't be anything like cardboard or anything?
Those were long years ago. So all the covers have to get rid of.
So, I mean, my concern is, you know, we have to get rid of them, we table us until we find out, we get them all in one place, and find out how many we have, and then we'll, you know, say, yeah, we can dispose of them or whatever, and throw them in the dumpster. You know, the thing is, I don't want to see, you know, we used to have a set, set price of the dumpster anyways, right, two forty, what I'm saying is, they're going to fill up the dumpster, and we're going to have to have two dumpsters in one month, I mean.
So if I do a little bit each month?
Yeah.
I can just tell you, the LCOC has $2,000 on getting rid of those original set of books for this batch by weight in dumpsters, so it's like the books are heavy, you know?
Was that that whole room?
That was that whole room, but that was two thousand dollars worth of disposal, you know?
Well.
There's a question about, um, you know, it's not to use any sharp objects or anything, but, um, could junior high students, um, feed the manclore and possibly earn something for it? Instead of being dumping these?
I've never tried to rip a cover off.
I don't know how hard it is.
It's a very sharp utility.
So they use no?
You have to use it. Okay, then that would be.
They use no knives to do the book? No, it was Barbara and a family and a couple of kids in that family. And they literally just ripped the paper out of the covers and threw them.
Oh, they worked it in that way, from the inside out.
Right, that's, that's what they did. They threw the paper into boxes that we are transporting still to the.
And do that over a couple of months or whatever, into the dumpster and whatever.
Right, and then we have the exhuming of the covers that will go in the dumpster that arrived today.
So, considered disposal of ele- elementary textbooks. However, which way we wanted to do this and do it over a couple of months and, you know, do the recycling thing if you want.
Well, we have a group of kids who recycle, so I can give them, they collect on Friday mornings. Um.
How long would it take for them to rip the covers off? Is this a volunteer thing or is this something maybe they could earn a little bit something for? It sounds like a lot of work.
What will they do?
They, we have boxes that we recycle and I remember they come around and separate the plastics from the paper and, who's the guy at the recycling plant that comes and picks it? Thank you.
Yeah.
Comes and picks them up weekly or monthly. But I, I can try that avenue.
Well, needed, needed disposing, so do I have a motion on disposing of elementary textbooks? Whatever way you want to do it, go ahead and do it. I recycle all the time. Yeah, you could, yeah, I mean, yeah, so I don't, I don't know how much the dumpster gets filled up, so. And, you know, as far as, you know, the dumpster and so on, like, we pay a flat fee for the dumpster every month. So, um, I don't see that becoming a big problem unless we're going to, you know, fill the dumpster up in two days or whatever.
No, I can have it picked away at the beginning now in June or whatever, start cleaning a little bit.
Could you move that?
I'll, I'll move that, um, the old textbooks get res- get, um, disposed of with recycling being a primary step. Um, the recycling committee, if you, uh, taking off covers over time and not being compensated because it's part of their lives. And it should just become, uh, something that they do. And then dispose of what needs to be disposed of.
Okay, so, how about to consider, consider disposal of elementary textbooks, recycling being the top priority at the principal's discretion?
Come here, I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Five to none. Uh, the reason I put number two on the agenda is our buses. We had two buses go down two consecutive days, similar problems, similar things. And the first thing that came to my mind was, okay, someone messing with the buses. So, question is, how are those security cameras working? Are they working? Are they functioning correctly? I don't like that look. Okay, so, so they, they probably, I, I know they.
They could use an upgrade.
I, I, I know they need, probably need an upgrade and so on like that. Um, so, it might be worthwhile to have, have some, you know, who?
We have Seacoast Security right now all the time. We have Black Bear, who is closer. Seacoast is across because they charge us, doesn't come up and back. Um, I try to get them so they come the first time at ten, before they would take us on their second job, we wouldn't be able to do. And then they leave and then things wouldn't work. Um, they are more costly if I was to travel. So I don't know if you want to stay completely with Seacoast Security. There is Black Bear who is closer. I think it's Cumberford someplace. I could call them both.
Well, I'd, I'd like to get them looked at. I mean, the stuff is recorded, it's put on an SD card or something, right? On a flash card or something, it's been recording.
And they were, it was DC on the area at one point.
So, maybe, I mean.
That's why I said upgrade.
So I think we need to, need, we need to sort of maybe upgrade this and, um, maybe to have both of them know to look at to what we have, okay? And especially, you know, the important parts of the building. I mean, number, number one, you know, the first thing I thought was, okay, someone messing with the bus. And not that it's going to prevent them from messing with, with the bus or whatever, but you know what? It's going to be a little bit of a challenge, you know, to take them away from there, so. Question?
I just wanted to make a comment. Another thing in the grant writing class was really, there's a lot of grants out there for security of school buildings and security. That's, infrastructure and security are where the grants are right now. And school security, um, there, there's a lot of avenues for that because there's been, uh, mandatory upgrades. I know Washington Academy, um, had to go through a full security upgrade and stuff and, and different regulations. But there are a lot of grants out there for that. Is, is there any way you can pursue any of this? Because I know.
What I have, at least in my mind, and I'm certainly open to suggestions from the board, the school department has unexpended grant funds that are basically the remnants of past grants that just didn't get entirely soaked up. And our auditors audit those faithfully as a listing, as an amount of money. We have, we had at one point some type of technology grant that either bought, um, ITVs or laptops or paid for wiring or something, but it is a technology grant. And it predates me by many years. But my point is, in order to spend those funds, they have to be loosely related to the original purpose. In my mind, technology, wiring and the like seem to go together. What I would do is, I would, if this board approves, I would feel comfortable using the unexpended grant fund released from that particular one to support the security system. Good idea.
So you want me to call them?
Well, what I'd like to do is propose, um, you know, put a motion up there to, um, have these two companies called and maybe even the third one up there somewhere around, okay, to evaluate the, uh, the security system, you know, especially with the cameras and so on like that. Not so much the security system in the school, not the alarm system, but actually the camera systems and where they're pointing to and what kind of condition they are. If we're using full technology, what it would take to get up to good technology. And I've seen a lot of these, you know, cameras they have advertised on the web or whatever. You can buy, you know, four or five packs of cameras, you know, a thousand dollars. They're all, it's all run out, it's all SD card technology. And they're all wireless to a certain point, so. You can sit outside that school. I can sit outside that school anyways and actually perfectly punch on a laptop because the wireless hits everything in the school with the Y-boys, so that's something to look at, so. So that's a motion I'd like to make and have the, uh, the school board authorized you to do that. And do I have a second on that? All in favor of that? Okay. Consider the following, you know, the, the reading, the first reading of the following policies. Again, just looking for a first reading tonight. I am familiar with these three policies. The first one, uh, Freedom of Access under the Freedom of Information Act. Basic tenets of this I would share with the board. The, uh, Freedom of Information Act pertains to material that is, A, in the public domain and B, pre-existing. So if we have a request for information under this act, we don't have to specifically create a document, we don't have to offer a custom analysis. Uh, but anything that is in the public domain and a pre-existing document is likely to be, uh, public under the Freedom of Information Act. On page two of the policy, you can see the nuts and bolts of how the policy would be implemented. First hour is free. After that, uh, we can charge an hourly rate. And basically, if school personnel at the school or at my office had to devote more than an hour to answering this request, uh, there would be an hourly charge and a copying fee of twenty cents a page. I believe it's fifteen dollars an hour and twenty cents a page, uh, beyond the first hour. So this essentially, uh, satisfies the requirements of the law in the event, uh, somebody makes a request for information, basically. So that's what that one pertains to.
Question? Um, is this different than something else that's already out there? Is there a change?
Hmm, I don't believe so. This one is a first reading, so I don't believe you actually have this on the books. That's why it's a first reading.
It's, you know, we, every meeting we get, we always policies that, um, you know, how do we know when they need to be updated? And is there a list of all the policies that we have?
We do, in your policy binder, and I believe you have a copy at, at the building level, there is an index listed down the required policies and it's, there's a code, there's a code index. And by content area, some are required, some are recommended. And to answer your question, how do we know when it's time to update us? Main school management sends my office an updated policy. So if there's a change in the law, that's usually a driver behind modifying your policy. If there's a change in the law, MSMA will send us an updated policy. And that's how they arrive in my office and I pass them on to the board members as they come to me.
So all schools in the community do the same thing?
If they don't have one in place, if you're curious, I have trucked these three around. Uh, where was I last week? Pembroke and Perry both received the same copy that you did. And, uh, E-Sport already has a KDB policy on the books. And they've actually had to implement theirs on several occasions that they have fielded requests from the community.
This is just a first reading?
Yes, just a first reading tonight. So for the first reading on KDB, Public Right to Know, Freedom of Information, Freedom of Access, rather. Freedom of Access, I don't know if you're on that.
Um, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, I don't know how much of this is, you know, required by, with late. But the only little detail that I, um, would like to comment on is in the fourth paragraph on the first page. It says, um, documentation shall be available for immediate inspection. And it seems like immediate is sort of an unreasonable.
So, and, and, and this is, this is the kind of feedback that helps me tremendously. I have actually had members of the community from other communities request to view a body of information that is too extensive just to put on the copier and that in fact was not available electronically. So if you have a historical document, let's say from five years ago that we maintain, uh, somebody can say, yes, I'd like to see those, and that's when the inspection comes in. If you're wondering what happened in that case, we asked this gentleman just to reserve a time. Called my office ahead, you can come in whatever time. We set up a time that was mutually convenient. We actually have a room across the hallway from my office that was available. And a couple of people, uh, came in and sifted through some historical documents that were in the public domain that were available, but the staff was about this high. So it was simply, it was simply not feasible to put those on the copier and we did not have an electronic copy available. So that's when the inspection, uh, provision of that policy came into play.
I, that raises a question. Um, I looked at this and assumed that all these immediately available documents would be maintained in that office anyway, right?
Some are and some are not. You do have some at the building level. And most of, most of it would be at my office, uh, simply because of the way that we process, the way that we do business, whether it's expensive, whether it's the expenses that go on the warrant, whether it's the policy in the binder. But there is, it is well within the realm of possibility that there is some documentation at the building level that would in fact come under that policy.
Well, my question was, um, it also includes agendas and minutes.
Right.
And that, as written, would go back to the beginning of the time. Uh, and I'm assuming you don't keep all the agendas and the minutes going back?
No, I mean, I, I, I've, I've, truthfully, I have fielded some rather strange requests, uh, over the years.
The policy should limit that to some, some practical time period to make it immediately available.
And, and we can write that in.
Should that be a few months?
You can write that in.
This is a first reading? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if, the other thing that I would say is, and I've had to say this, actually. I've actually had to respond in writing. If something does not exist, it does not exist. So if there was water damage in a closet somewhere and documents were destroyed, I've had to say, they don't, they do not exist. And that, that satisfies the requirement of the law. But we can take, easily do as you are suggesting and we can take it up next time. So because this is a first reading, put in what edits or what additions you want to put in there. And we'll do it before the board and then we'll do another reading, so. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Second one is JL Student Wellness. This one here is a little bit lengthy. Again, that's the last one we have to, before we start. Uh, this one, this one is actually a required policy. Uh, so you have to have some version of a wellness policy compiled. On the first few pages, you see the original intent of the wellness policy that addresses basically school nutrition. But in recent years, the wellness policy, uh, in practice at least, has been extended to include social and emotional health of students. Uh, we have students around the district, around the county really, uh, that have some challenges in their everyday lives. And, uh, the student wellness policy, um, offers some guidance in those areas as well. So this is a required policy. Again, just a first reading tonight. Go ahead.
But it says appointment and role of the wellness committee. Do we have all these people in place in the district-wide wellness committee? I mean, these are, that's a lot of workers.
Perry, Perry asked me that same question, uh, when I was in that meeting. And we are not required to hire anybody to satisfy the requirement of the policy. But the fundamental requirements we do meet. Um, but there are some other members listed on that page who are optional members. You may or may not include the following in your policy and it lists, and it lists a few down. I do believe that we would be able to meet the minimum requirement of a wellness policy. Or a wellness committee, as the case may be, I'm sorry.
So things like, uh, food services director, that could be our club?
Right, right. So, so the first five or, or six that I'm seeing there, that's the required? Yes, yes. Okay, so, school committee member, is there anyone that has signed today? Not that I'm aware of. Okay, so. Okay. So I have a motion on that, subject to first reading. Second on that? Any further discussion? All in favor? JLCD Administration of Medication for Students and JLCD-E Medication Administration on Student Field. This particular one, I would encourage us all to, to spend some time with and to, and to really dig into this one. Medication, um, students today seem to come, uh, come to school with a wide variety of medical needs. Couple of elements in the policy I want to call your attention to immediately. Policy reference, um, I believe Schedule A or, or, uh, I forget the exact terminology, but there is a level of medication that is regulated, uh, by state law. And that would be in the case of a medication that has a narcotic or potentially addictive element in it. And it lists in your policy an amount to have on hand, no more than like a twenty-day supply of a Class A medication or however, exactly however it's worded. I would encourage us to spend some time with this policy and be comfortable with what it says. The reason that that is included in the policy, and I'm reading between the lines a little bit, there has, there has been a lot of crime associated statewide with, uh, either prescription narcotics, prescription drugs or so on, FAP resale abuse. I don't need to go into the details. But if we have any of these items on the premises because a student has a legitimate need and in some cases, depending upon what it is, the parent has to come in specifically and administer the medication, I might add. Um, I would just make sure that the board is comfortable in their understanding of the policy. And I would also make sure our principal is as well.
Question? Um, since, since we've been fortunate enough to have a full-time nurse, is it possible for her to go through and read this and give her opinion? And then maybe the principal could report back to us on what our nurse says? Because a lot of this is, I mean, it's going to directly affect her. And, um, I'd like a professional's opinion since we have her on staff.
Exactly, I think that's an excellent.
Exactly, I think that's an excellent idea.
I think as a pharmacy, I don't need to interrupt, but they put those products in a safe in the pharmacy.
Right.
When she's going through her facilities and everything, whatever she would need to comply with this. I think, I think our new nurses would be very per-.
I think one of the first things is what they call an Xbox.
Yeah, I would, I would like to have her opinion when we do the second reading. I'd like to know what she thinks, are any changes she would like to see in that? I don't know how everybody else feels.
No, I agree.
Okay, do I have a motion on this for the first reading?
I'll move.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll have the nurse, uh, the nurses coming on, take a look at this and use us our professional.
Just waiting for fingerprints to move.
All in favor? Okay. Professional development follow-up. Do you have any suggestions?
Well, we have, what I did is I went back and reviewed the tapes, previous discussions. And my conclusion was that it was pretty unfocused. We don't really know what we're doing as far as what. There were comments made about needing to include the community. There were comments made about making the teachers not feel as if they were bearing the brunt of whatever is going on. And there were comments made about the, uh, school board getting some kind of training. Uh, but we're still crouching in terms of professional development, which is, as I mentioned two times ago, is a buzzword for teachers, um, that doesn't necessarily have positive connotations. It's not necessarily something they go, oh, good, I need to be professional development. So as far as who could do this, I have no idea. I, I looked online to find anything I thought would be useful, so that's, that's what I got.
Well, there is a lady at the University of Maine that, um, specializes in organizational development of schools in rural areas and she's concentrated. And, um, it is, uh, part of their duties as a college is to do this for free and give a little, um, analysis of what maybe they could do for the school.
Yeah, and that person, do you have that name?
Uh, I, I could look it up real quick here, yeah. But I, I, and I think if you would like, I could contact that person and see if she, I, I, this is one of the things that she does in many schools. And she, she is a PhD in rural studies. And she specializes in that. I don't know her, uh, personally at all, but I could reach out for that because it would be, um, and this is, it would be a service provided for free.
Well, I'd really like to hear what she has to say.
Yeah, if you want me to contact her, I have not contacted her.
Is the board comfortable, currently having to contact this person?
Yeah.
So you want that or another branch?
No, or no.
Or, or?
Yeah, she's a PhD in the education department.
Okay. Board comfortable with that contact we made?
Absolutely.
Do you want a motion? Okay, a motion on that?
I'll move if, uh, that they contact this woman and arrange for her to address the board at some time in the future, if that can be.
Okay, a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Um, one thing, if, if she is not able to, to have a, a department of education professionals in organizational leadership and, um, in human resource for education for schools at the university, could it be, if she is not, I, I, no.
Well, she's your point contact.
Yeah, she's got point contact, but she directs me to another person. Can I use that? It's like, they would be university PhDs at the University of Maine.
Is there any motion to include colleagues if necessary?
Yeah, Dr. Colley at the University of Maine, or no.
Okay. To consider discussion of employee benefits.
This is a follow-up to an item that, uh, I've raised in a previous board meeting. And, and more specifically, my office is just seeking, uh, a clarification specifically on adding holiday pay to Shelby Tinker's contract.
Oh, that's good, because I was going to ask about that in this context here.
Right. So it would, it would indeed be a benefit. And the point that my office makes, and I've got the copy of the contract here. Part-time employees shall be defined as working less than thirty-two and a half hours per week. And indeed, uh, our bus drivers are pulling about thirty hours a week, so they are under the thirty-two point five threshold. Uh, it was confirmed, because I double-checked, that, uh, neither of our bus drivers take the insurance, so they are not, they are not considered full-time. What my office is simply looking to, for the sake of consistency, is, uh, whether or not we would be willing to pay for the eleven holidays listed in the contract. And I, I can read them, I can read them, read them off here.
What, what indifference would that, after the collective bargaining contract, would that create an issue there? If we did that?
Well, we could have an issue right now because we have one bus driver who is being paid for those days and one bus driver who's not. And we also have another part-time employee who's been with us for some time, who's also being paid for those days. So my office picked up on the inconsistency.
How did that happen?
Well, in one case, it was a historical arrangement that was addressed during the process of negotiation, but that has been established that that is going to continue. And Mr. Olson got paid for those days when we hired him. So what I, what my office is seeking is specifically for holiday pay, no other benefits, just to be consistent with the other two part-time employees.
Well, sounds like we have to think right then. And if that then.
Is she working as many hours as the other bus driver?
Yes. The time, the time cars that I see both come in at just about thirty days.
You know what I mean, I, I don't have anything to do with that part of it. So I just wanted to know the part of it.
This is both the President of the Union and, and, and the transportation tree. My office is simply looking to be consistent. We have, we have two part-time employees that are being paid those holidays and one who is not. But that, that is, that is, that is the only intent.
So, how about a motion to, um... Pay, 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 pay holiday pay to the part-time bus drivers that are maintaining, what, thirty hours a week? Is that where we're, we're at? Is that the threshold?
The threshold is in your contracts, thirty-two and, thirty, thirty-two and a half. Uh, what I would recommend is simply to extend holiday pay to Shelby Tinker to be consistent with other part-time employees.
So the motion should be to extend the holiday pay to Ms. Tinker to be in consistency with the other bus driver, right, pay the holidays, including retroactive holidays.
Right.
Okay. And a second on that motion?
I'll move that, I'll second.
You can second it, you can move it, so you can second it. I put it out there, so. And all in favor of that motion?
Okay, how about discussion?
You can have a discussion, go right ahead.
Okay. Um, I'm just wondering about, um, you know, we're, we're making this very narrow. So the next time a bus driver gets hired, do we want to make it clear that they, you know, a thirty-two hour, thirty-hour a week bus driver gets holiday pay? Or do we want to just be making this decision for one driver?
I think my advice would be to confine this decision to this instance. And I would say that for this reason. You have existing contractual language. When the existing contract, also historically, we've been operating with three and a half bus drivers. We have two. And our bus drivers have been very generous in changing their runs, doing extra pains if the need arises. Um, I would confine it to this instance rather than to establish, you know, rather than try and establish, uh, some kind of a precedent. And we really can't change the wording of the contract until the next negotiation cycle. So that would be my recommendation.
I, I just think that for future, uh, negotiations, we have trouble getting bus drivers and sweetening the pot in this way.
Well, that would, that's going to be my second thing is that this, we don't have bus drivers wiggling their wings. And of course, that might be an additional, you know, perk. And okay, well, we're going to pay for holidays and you get paid thirty hours. I can see keeping it where it is right now and making it just for this particular case. And you need the contract language in place. Next contract is what, two and a half years? Right?
One and a half, wasn't it?
Would that suit?
This, this is year two, unless it was there.
As a side note, can you say, I support, so I want you to know, because I know I support bus drivers. Looking ahead, one of the things that hasn't changed from negotiations, and I have a high time binding of sub-two bus drivers, is you look at every other place in the contract, the table's blah, 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 blah. Now, sub-two bus drivers, in the last couple of negotiations, hasn't changed one penny. We have no incentive to get bus drivers, um, subjects to company because that, hey. So just want you, so when you look ahead at a year and a half now, if you could change that line a little bit, we might be better off with sub-two bus drivers.
Okay. So, put that amendment in here, for this case only. Uh, all in favor of that? Okay, to consider, uh, discussion on ordering two buses. Now, my question come into this, is we only have approval with the state funding for one bus.
That's correct.
What is the possibility of getting on that list again for an additional bus?
The window, the window is, the window is open for round two funding for this year. However, the way that the process works, you have to remove a bus and state which bus you're seeking replacement for. We've had two buses condemned, taken off the road. I used one of them to get approval, immediate approval for the replacement because we don't have a spare. So that one's already accounted for. You do have another one that we've taken off the road. So my question to the board, and this is part of the discussion, uh, it says here ordering two buses. We have one in line for subsidy right now. But because of our grant application, you have enough money in your budget to make an initial payment on two. You've got forty thousand dollars in there, which was on.
My question is, is the possibility of getting on that list and retiring bus eighty-one?
Yep.
Which is the second bus that was condemned? And using that as, as a reference, okay, we're replacing this bus here which was condemned. Eighty-one and eighty-two are gone.
Okay, so.
The possibility of getting on that list and then using that to order another, a second bus?
I think it's slim for this year, but the strategy, I would recommend we do one in one rather than two at a time, and here's why. When I spoke to Pat Hinkley in the Department of Education, she said that all the money had been used up in round one. So the round two window is open. And for, if you're not familiar with the process, I apologize. I'm saying round one and round two, like everybody knows how to buy a school bus. But what happens is if in round one you get approved and another, another school department cuts it from their budget, that money trickles down to somebody else in round two. This is November and Pat had told me specifically on the phone that all of the round one money had been used for this year. But we are good because we've got an approved round one funded bus, so we're good to go with one. Mike's point, this is why I say next year, this is an annual thing. Every year, there's a new part of money for school bus purchases. It's not the same amount, but we could apply again for funding in another year and do exactly as Mike is saying.
We're talking fiscal year, we're not talking calendar year, so we can't just jump onto this in January and say, okay, we're in round one now.
No, the, 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 the application window opens and closes and I can't get us in for round one funding, um, again, this, this fiscal year.
Okay. If we get into line next year, can we use that to fund a bus that was retroactively paid? We want one now, deliver it in February, could we use that to pay for that bus delivered in February?
I think so.
I would have to, I would want to make sure that we can, because, I mean, I would like, yeah, I'd like to get two buses. And I know we have the, we have the rear halt to do two buses, but I would actually have to have some funding moved back to the state for myself, too.
Right. What I, what you, my, my gut feeling is right now, and if we want to commit to trying to buy two, I'd have to follow up and call again, which I can do. My feeling is that because round one soaked up all of the available funding, if we tried to buy a second bus, we'd be buying it entirely on our own. If we want to commit to getting something bad in terms of state subsidy, I think we would stand a better chance to buy one this year and one, and one next year. But I would, I can follow up, but I know we're good to go for one bus.
Are, are there any future opportunities with the, um, BW grant? Is that all?
I, I, I honestly don't know whether there would be any, any, any future opportunities, uh, of that nature. Grant funding, it pops up and it pops up five, six years down the road. I honestly don't know.
But that was a specific.
That was. Right. It was, yeah.
Is there some place that you could contact, um, maybe one of the bigger schools, um, Bangor or Portland, that might have a grant writer that could maybe gear us towards the way of, hey, we found this grant for buses or transportation? I mean, can we piggyback off of somebody else's ideas? Do you have any contacts in any of those schools? Because there are grant writers that are specifically grant writing for the schools and they're looking for this stuff. Instead of us doing the light work, again, maybe they would share some of their information. Hey, this is the avenue that we took and here's, here's sort of where you could start looking for bus grants.
Couple of things come to mind immediately. I mean, there are a couple of other superintendents that I can call. Superintendent Goram started her administrative career in Mochi, Spore. Uh, one of Lubek's former superintendents, uh, three or four before me, is actually in Presque Isle at Sad One. So there are some people that I can reach out to and I'm actually going to see the gentleman from Presque Isle at the end of the month, uh, at Small Schools Coalition. The other thing that might be a possibility, uh, the reorganized and re-energized Washington County Consortium, uh, which at the moment is talking about how to fund the position for next year, um, might offer, might be able to offer some assistance in terms of seeking grants. The consortium does have a new director who is working off a one-year contract and that the expectation about how to continue that position, uh, is that it would seek out grants and basically use some of the administrative fees, uh, to try and fund that position. But that person would not necessarily have to be confined to professional development. I see no reason why that person couldn't explore transportation, for example, or any of the other options. Uh, but, uh, I'm actually, we're trying to, when I say we, it's superintendents as a group, are trying to schedule a meeting, uh, before the end of the month to talk about that. So I can make a mental note to myself and.
I'm sure some other schools, especially larger schools, or maybe even, you know, the, the poor, um, rural schools have found, have explored this already, have already done a lot with the light work, might share that information with us. I'd like to, we, we're, we're pretty poor rural school that would qualify for a lot of things if we knew about them. And I thought maybe there was some networking that superintendents do that possibly has that information on this.
I've mentioned the Small Schools Coalition, and that is a tremendous networking opportunity for small rural schools. They've been influential in, uh, in, uh, getting legislation passed and changing formulas and policies and so on. Uh, I'll be at the meeting on the thirtieth, so I can bring that up.
They could show us where the money is. Where, where could we apply?
Wow. So, yeah, if we're looking at it, it'd be good.
Okay.
See if we can maybe, you know, reach out to someone who might know something else that might be around. So, uh, buses, prices.
Couple of things. Um, the quotes that I've got, fifty-eight thousand dollars for a thirty-passenger bus that's on the lot right now at Cressy's, downside, only got a V-eight motor, which is a little underpowered. Esport has a thirty-passenger bought from the same person, it's a V-ten, and that runs like a top.
The V-eight would be underpowered. I've done a little research on that. The V-eight would be underpowered, I've done a little research on that.
Yep, yeah.
That, that size bus, it was smaller if it was, you know, a sixteen-passenger bus and something like that, yeah, but, you know, once you go beyond that range and something like that, it's.
The other quote that I have, also from Cressy, eighty-five thousand dollars for a sixty-six passenger, and this is one of the items that I'm seeking feedback from the board, how big, how small, you have sixty-eight students at the elementary school, K to eight, pre-K to eight right now.
He also sent one, I think, for, was it fifty-four passenger?
He might have sent that one to you.
Fifty-four passenger, I believe, was, top of my head is about eighty-five thousand. There's not much difference in price on size and something like that. I mean, so, if, if you turn around and you're looking at like a Minotaur, with the V-ten in it and something like that, yeah, that's a smaller bus, that's basically, you know, a large van, okay? Uh, but then again, you, you're, you can find, you're, it's a thirty-passenger, okay, so, I mean, on a field trip, you're gonna probably have more than thirty kids on a field trip. Half the school goes on a field trip, that's, you know, not a neat bus to take.
I mean, you know, Helen's point earlier about seeing the bus driving by, you know, with relatively few kids on it, I get, the same, the same concerns came to me in Eastport, and that was a driver behind them getting the thirty-passenger bus. The difference is in the price, and, and there is quite a difference in price, but in terms of gas mileage, it, it's about the same. You're, you're looking at, you know, nine or ten miles to the gallon on a full-size school bus, the thirty-passenger bus isn't going to do better than twelve.
Yeah, the, the, the difference is basically, okay, so, yeah, diesel fuel is more money, gasoline is less, your diesel bus in the wintertime will get better gas mileage than a gasoline bus will in the wintertime. The gasoline bus, the mileage will go down to probably six miles per gallon delivered on, it's that much, so, I mean, working on it and something like that, I mean, warranty is about the same, working on the vehicle and something like that is about the same, so, the only size, the only size, why I looked at a smaller bus, because we did have a smaller bus, I mean, eighty-one is a fifty-four passenger bus versus the seventy-two passenger bus that you get down there now, so, there's really not a lot of difference as far as price goes. Size goes, mileage, it's, they're all about the same, so, it's not, it's not a big savings at all.
No, but, I mean, I'm looking for some guidance from this board, and I'd be lying if I said time wasn't a factor. I, I think it is, uh, our neighbors to the west at the Whitey School Department are being neighborly, and they're letting us use their bus, but if they have an emergency or their bus breaks down, they're gonna pick up the phone and say, we need our bus back.
He's got a sixty-six passenger, two of them on the lot right now, we could have it in two weeks, right?
Yes, probably, yeah, about two, it wouldn't be more than two.
Forty engines in the, is that diesel?
The Cummins diesel, six only. Uh, the one at O'Connor, um, he has two stock units coming in, we're looking at probably six weeks on those. Eighty-eight, five, comparatively equipped and something like that, the equipment is pretty much, right, almost the same. And it's just, that, that's a dead school bus, except a different manufacturer, so, so now it comes down to, I, you know, I, I agree with you on one bus and then maybe going for a second bus next year, you know, it'd be nice to have two buses this year.
Is there any safety difference between a sixty-six passenger bus and a thirty? The size of the vehicle?
Just the size of the vehicle.
But that's more difficult to drive, I would think. I've never driven a bus.
Probably not, no.
No?
No. And I can say that because I've driven a school bus before, so, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's a bus, I mean, it's not like getting in your, your four-wheel drive vehicle or your, you know, little Mitsubishi or whatever you have, it's a bus.
I mean, if, if this board wanted to go with the thirty-passenger model, um, we have, we have enough money on hand, we can make that happen, if the board, if the board wanted to go with sixty-six, we've got, we've got, we have an approved application with the state for up to ninety thousand dollars. So, we can go full-size, we can go thirty.
I'd kind of like to hear from Tina and Anna about our need in terms of the size of the bus.
It depends, one of the things Mike said about how many kids go on field trips, sometimes we take five through eight, or eight through four.
If there's a field trip going to Bangor and it has half the school, you're not gonna fit them on a thirty-passenger bus, and you'd probably want to send a newer bus down there.
When we had both buses down, and the kid was jam, Tina wasn't there, but she was well aware of the situation, so, Kenny, we jammed those babies on like sardines from fish factory, and, um, almost, we might have had to take almost two rounds to home, and we didn't, thank goodness. Um, so, I get skeptical because of our situation of high school, of trying to, we can always come up with, and I will publicly give Alba and Clarence credit, and if we needed to, we, they would help us out with the jam, if we, if, uh, had been, if we had another bus, so, uh, so, I get nervous about thirty-passenger buses because of long term, because our two buses that we currently have are getting older and a lot of use.
Yeah.
Thirty-passengers isn't going to be, yeah, isn't going to do field trips, and those are the buses that are going distant, should be the newer bus, because if not, we're looking at high, that's like my opinion, so.
I think the only reason we explored the, the Minotaur was because it was gasoline, it was a smaller bus, um, it had a little bit better Ford warranty, I know it's a Ford, it's a Ford loaded Ford chassis, but, you know, when, when you come down to it and something like that, yeah, it's fifty-five thousand versus eighty-five thousand, but when you look at capacities and something like that, even if we sent that, that Minotaur down to Metchaia's every day, I mean, we could possibly have more than forty kids going to high school, uh, thirty kids going to high school every day, so, that bus wouldn't be serviceable, so, and that was the only reason, I think, we, we looked at maybe getting a smaller bus, because, you know, it might have been more economical, but it really doesn't come out more economical in the long run.
Sensible, however, to wait six weeks is not sensible to me, to venue, or still at a price as small, but I'm only one person, I would like to hear from others.
So.
I know, we did buses in the last one.
Well, I, we'll put a motion on the floor, and you can move it, uh, to consider, you know, purchasing one bus, um, I would say probably on the fifty-four through seventy-seven passenger, whatever they have coming in on, on the lot.
Well, you said there is a sixty-six passenger on the lot.
Sixty-six passenger, I think.
I had moved to, to move forward and buy the sixty-six passenger one on the lot.
How soon does that get here?
Sixty-six passenger, yeah, that's.
I've, I've, I've got the Cressy sales agent's number saved in my phone, I can give you any indication.
So, we can have it quickly?
Yeah, just called my, I can actually talk to him last week, and he's got two of them, so, we're looking at two weeks and, and something like that to give the bus here, and that will include the camera, I think, right? I think so, okay. So, so the motion is to buy the sixty-six passenger bus? One bus? Okay, a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on that? We're going to spend eighty-eight thousand dollars, eighty-five thousand dollars. All in favor? There you go.
How much lag is that, is there on the subsidy?
We will see it on the next two seventy-nine, uh, which is, uh, released, it will be in February, because we, we already have an approved application for that amount of money. So, I, there's a, there's a form that I have to fill out, when we take and deliver it, but that should, that should be coming back on the next two seventy-nine, when it's in February.
And the actual money for the first year's payment, that's already been in the budget, approved in the budget, we passed last year.
Standard, you're looking at a five-year lease purchase, your payment will be seventeen thousand dollars a year, and we have, in order to get subsidy this year, your application is this year, we sent it, so you have to buy it within this fiscal year, uh, so, it will, now that you voted, it will happen quickly, you'll, you'll have, you'll see it here, middle of December, or sooner.
To consider discussion on DOE, Department of Education staff attending a school committee meeting to speak about initiatives regarding special education students' attendance and truancy. Um, this comes out of that meeting again that I, I went to down in Augusta, and I attended one of their workshops, and it was actually, uh, it was a workshop that was supposedly based on special education, but it actually turned out to be more informative and more discussion about, uh, the, um, attendance policies that have been put into place by the state, they've been kind of upgrading and something like that, and they've, um, kind of looked at a way of, um, I guess you could call, given a, given a school rating about how students attend, whether they don't attend, whether they, you know, uh, are pruant and something like that, and one of the things that they really highlighted on it, and a couple of speakers they had there, they highlighted on a couple of things, is that, especially you have students that have a special education IEP, a lot of times, their IEP might say, okay, they come in at ten-thirty or eleven o'clock in the morning, they're not in at seven o'clock or seven-thirty or whatever it is, and they have to have a certain amount of time in the school during the day, or they're marked absent, so, a lot of the, the writing that was put on here, put onto this, this policy, you know, didn't take it into effect that some of these special education students knew that, that sometimes they, there's students that have trouble because they might be homeless, they might be, you know, transient between parents' homes and something like that, so they didn't take that into consideration, and, um, the, uh, who was the DOE staff member that came up to this, someone was, um?
Well, I thought that's who was, because it was mentioned, uh, two meetings ago in the principal's report, that there was a staff member that went to address, and also there was going to be the person in charge of attendance from the, from the Department of Education, was going to be at Helen's Restaurant, and I went there, and the lady's actually Title One, she doesn't do attendance.
So, couple.
So, I, I checked it out, and, um, so, because I was interested in that, um, and I called the Department of Education, um, Gail Erdine is in charge of all, um, uh, attendance, truancy policies, and she is also, her main specialty, in, in addition to attendance and truancy, is, um, dropout rates, prevention of dropout rates, and I know we have a problem with that, and we, we've had high dropout rates in, uh, I believe, what was it, four last year, and what, she had, she had some really good ideas, um, but since our students go to high schools outside of here, the dropout rates, uh, is there policies here at this school for our high school students on what to do, or does Metchaia's and, um, Washington Academy just handle that under their policies? Because it directly affects our community, do we have policies to address, you know, what we do to help this?
You, you, you would have a, a dropout prevention protocol at the elementary level, but to answer your question, Metchaia's and WA handle it specifically for their secondary students. Now, interestingly, since they both take our students, the data that gets reported to the state, it will show up as a Lubec resident student, even if it is a high school student, so, yes, policies that WA and Metchaia's are in play here, and those students would offer them to those policies, but the actual data, the recording of data, comes back to the town of residence, so they would be listed, uh, as a dropout for Lubec statistically, uh, at the high school level, even though you don't have a high school. But just to piggyback on the people in the department, Gail Erdine, she is, she also addresses, she also worked with McKee Bento homeless, and I've had to talk to her, I've had to, I've had to talk to her a few times, I can call her if this board would like. Chelsea Fortin is the one who first briefed superintendents about this chronic absenteeism in the law.
Chelsea Fortin was the person I talked to.
She came down, I think in September, at the Washington County Superintendent's meeting. The other contact that's potential is, is Jeanette Kirk, who is the, who was the lead person in the Title One office, and the reason her name occasionally pops up is because the driver behind all of this is the federal Department of Education, and attendance is usually, is one of the ways they measure student success, or student achievement, is by attendance.
And that's what Gail was saying, that this new program came out, it's a rankings thing, and it's how does your school rank, and you can see the progress and everything, and, uh, the attendance is taken into consideration, no matter if the child is in the hospital having surgery for a month, you're counted against as, you know.
Trip Florida the week before February vacation.
Yeah, and that, that happens quite often with children, it's a lot of kids that do take week-long things, and then he, she was looking it up, and the truancy policy for the school is the same, and it's a lengthy policy you have to go through, um, and you have to notify and writing, has to go to superintendent, it has to go to the school board, um, they have to be given so many chances, but the attendance policy, they're, they're, those are two different things.
Right.
And our attendance policy has walked out big in the booklet, and she said it should be very specific, so that if a child is going, and since there are changes, that we need to notify the parents, that if they go to Florida, they're going to be considered almost truant, for, they're gone for five days, because there is excused and unexcused.
Right.
And, um, there needs to be more explanation in attendance policy, and when I talked to her, she said she loves Lubec, I said, she said, I'll come up there and talk to the board, and they said, oh, you don't want to come all the way up here, and she said, no, she said she would love an excuse, she said, let me know, and she said, I can help come up here, and I can help answer any questions, and she will help us craft our own attendance policy, just like the truancy policy, but she said we should have two.
Right, right.
And she said she'd be more than happy to come up here, at no cost.
Did we, did we want Gail, that we were talking about?
She's in charge of that, and also she's in charge of the homeless, too, and I know that we have a problem with that, and maybe there's more things that we can do to address that.
So, would the board like to have someone from the DOE come up and, and talk to us about the policy, and this, this is, you know, kind of a new initiative that they're doing, and, you know, like I said, the, the workshop that I was in, it was supposed to be about special education, but, you know, they, they brought this out, and it just morphed into this whole other thing that, you know, they're talking about, you know, homeless students and students that are going between parents' houses and stuff, and special education needs that, you know, aren't being addressed and stuff, so.
And I think it's something the community would like to hear and watch.
Could it be a workshop?
It could be.
Contact her, contact her, we can maybe do a workshop on that sometime after the first Z, and maybe.
And, yeah, put up some flyers or something, yeah, let the public know, and it could be on the, the, um, town website. That'd be really nice. No, yeah, because the town calendar, and they can, school board workshop, and it's like, no, I want it on the website. That's another thing she mentioned.
What's that? Um, so, we have a second on that motion, we have him contact her and something like that, okay? Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Okay. Tell her we'll get her some claims or something, right?
Policy.
That's right, that's right, yeah. Okay, so, let's do some more bus talk. To consider discussing putting, putting used buses, because unused buses, well, it's actually used buses that we have, and along in the fleet out to bid, so, we have two buses that sit down at Randy's, three.
Two were recently condemned, one's been there quite some time, Randy should soon get rid of that one, too.
The third one down there?
That's the one we voted not to repair, because the oil leak would require disassembling the entire engine and everything.
Oh, that's the one that, uh, years ago, a couple of years ago, the, the rear end caught on fire or something there, yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, so there's three buses down there.
Who was there, who was watching?
Now, those are in high demand, uh.
Storage and storage.
Storage, camps, people put them up on properties in the woods somewhere, yeah?
Um, somebody in the community mentioned this to me, that, um, one or two of those buses have almost branded tires.
If they were being used recently, which two of them were, they were required to maintain an inspection sticker, so that's entirely possible.
They put in pretty decent tires on them.
Yeah, I know those are very pricey, um.
Yeah, they're about, uh, four or five hundred dollars a piece, depending on the size they are, so, well, um, three of them, okay, we have two short buses and a long bus down there, so, um, basically, I'd like to set a minimum bid on these, I think the bid language, and I think you saw it too, was MSA eighty-three, thirty-seven, uh, RSG thirty-seven had an ad go up, and the verbiage on the ad was pretty complete, what has to be done, I mean, um, I would say, I don't know what the third bus has done, I'd have to ask Randy what he thinks that bus is worth, but, I don't even know what year that one is.
Eighty-one? It's basically over for lunch.
Eighty-one?
Eighty-four.
Advantage. I can't do it, it's an eight, it's an eight something.
One's out of print, bad. American Pickers down here.
Yeah.
Well, the other two are old fours.
It might not be that old. It might be bust eighty-one, I suppose, what year it is.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's an eighty-four, no. These are old fours that are down there. The other, the other two, the eighty-one and eighty-two, or is it eighty-three? I don't know. Which is the one that's down there, that's been down there forever. Do you remember what number that was?
I, I have to find out with a simple call, and I won't be able to now.
But if you wondered what people use before, I've heard stories of people ripping out the back, three seats on each side, putting it in a wood stove, opening up one of the windows in the back, running metal vestas out, and it's a moose camp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would, that would.
Well, there's one down in the dike about every other day making pizza in it.
Yeah.
They, they outran high demand.
So, um, so they've, they've done everything. There's, there's a place, I know a couple of places out in Western Maine that, you know, you want this guy's doyad, and he's got like fifty buses, and he's got all kinds of stuff stored in these buses, so.
If, if people are using them for that, I mean, please do the people that'll be looking on LuBak Buy and Sell, and Uncle Henry's and stuff, playing the, for, can we broaden it out a little bit instead of just the people who wear most schools look, to where these people that make moose camps, and maybe don't want it, and throw it on?
By, by law, we actually have it, we have to advertise it in one newspaper.
But I mean, in other places, maybe we can get better price, if more people.
Well, it has to be, it has to be a bid process, and we have to set a minimum bid for each bus.
So we could advertise it in some of those other spots that.
Yeah, I think the fact that you have to advertise it doesn't limit you to only that.
No, no, I mean, I think you can get on, I know you can get on Uncle Henry's for free.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's throw it out there. That, that's what people that are looking for stuff for moose camps and stuff, and they probably look for, on there.
Okay.
We go put it up.
Well, I, I know on the two buses that I've had discussions with him down there, um, I know that they roll. They both start, and they both will roll. I don't know about the third one, so.
I, I would suspect not on the third.
Yeah, I would say, uh, on the, on the two buses that we just put out of service, you know, I would say you have a minimum bid of at least fifteen hundred dollars on those buses each. So, and um, you know, the verbiage that was, that came from, um, Malagias is that was basically, you know, they can reject or accept any bids at all and something like that, so. Um, and again, I'll, I'll take a peek at the tires and stuff, but I don't know how. I think some of the tires might have been swapped around, who knows?
Don't we have to cut the frame and destroy the engine?
No, not now, no, not now. That was, that was with the Volkswagen van, right, so.
Yeah.
And with that, with that, with that being said, if, if we had to cut the frame and put a hole in the engine, it would have been basically probably worth about four hundred bucks in scrap metal. So, and they might have sat there a lot longer, so. Um, so for at least the, the two buses that I know about, we can get those going, and the third one, I don't know exactly where, how old that is.
You, you'd be putting that one up, it is like a skeleton.
Well, the, the other ones, the other ones are gonna have to be as is, where is, you know, no implied warranty, because, you know, they can't be used as school bus, they can be used as a camp. They can be used as storage, they can be used as a camp, if the guy wants to be able to pick them up, so.
Do you wanna go with no minimum on the third one?
What about if we ask Randy what he thinks it might?
We can do that.
This is not just an uneducated guess, I'm telling you about.
There's some, um.
I've already done the research.
You can say scrap with four hundred dollars?
I've heard about the third bus.
I'm gonna have, yeah, I'm gonna have to see him about that.
Yeah, so what if we, what if I move to put the three buses out to bid with a minimum bid of fifteen hundred on the two more recent retirees, and a minimum bid to be established after consultation with Randy?
Well.
Well.
Not, not necessar, not necessarily. If you, if you move to put it up to bid, I've already got fifteen hundred to have a minimum for the other two.
Could we put the minimum to be, you said scrap is four hundred. So we would at least get four hundred. So that should be the minimum. Because if somebody wants to pay a hundred, it's like, we can scrap it and get at least four hundred. So they need to pay at least four hundred. Well, we can get to scrap it. Because we, we don't wanna give it away. If we can at least get four hundred for scrap, we could do four hundred as a minimum.
Randy wants it sitting there much longer than you do, so.
Well, we can advertise it.
You're the one that shows trust values better than anybody, I think, so whatever you think.
Well, I mean, the other ones, I mean, they can't be used as a school bus, they really can't be used as a bus anymore. One of them needs extensively paid to actually make it even roadworthy to get inspected, so.
How long has that other one been there?
It's been there a while.
It, it hasn't been used, it hasn't been used since I've been using it.
So it's been parked there for years? So how many months are we gonna give this? Are we gonna set a date?
Problem is, they're parked under it. I think that's parked under it for more than a year. We're probably not gonna roll it out of there without doing some work on it, so.
And, well, winter coming, if that, so that, are they way back? Are they gonna be piled in stone?
Right now, they're, they're, you, you can see them from the road. At least two of them, I mean, where's the fourth one?
I think it's a little further towards the back.
Yeah, okay, okay. So, put all three out to bid. Minimum on two is fifteen hundred, minimum on the other one is four hundred?
It's late.
Okay. All in favor, uh, actually, a second on that? Second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor? There you go.
So we'll find that center to be there or find a place. The, the late center is still there, and four made public.
Yes, yeah, so we can take a peek at it and something like that, and put a couple of eyes on it.
I will draw eyes before it's made public. So tomorrow's gonna go, and then the week, but no.
And I think we're done here, and seven thirty-six, go ahead.
I, just one question comment about our email addresses. Do we, are we all on the LuBak school stuff now?
Yeah, I actually changed my name. I'm not my name.
Oh, just, just, just.
Are you reading tomorrow? Depends on the weather.
Nice. Okay.
That would be nice, but that was.
I got stopped, I called him probably three times.
Oh, okay, yeah.